Okay, thank you, thank you. Okay, thank you very much. So, I shall say a few words. So we are here at the... So this is all being videoed by Hexham TV, who's our service provider. So welcome to the Hexham Town Council here at Prior School, Hexham Abbey, on Monday the 12th of May 2025 at just a little past 6pm. This is the annual general meeting of the Hexham Town Council. Just before we start, I'm going to take us to item three on the Town Council minutes. It is just a great regret that I mention that the former clerk of the Town Council, who was our clerk for some forty years, Derek Tiffin, who served this council with, well, for a very long period. The time that Derek, he was a very, he was a great character, was Derek. They did a day tour with Derek Tiffin, so it was it. But he was here for forty years and it was, I think, was here from the start of when Hexham Town Council actually began. And led the first forty years of the Hexham Town Council, the 51st year of the Hexham Town Council. So obviously he's played a significant role. So if I could just ask if we could just do a minute's silence for Derek Tiffin? Okay, thank you so much. Mr. Clerk, if you could send a letter of condolence. Does anybody want to say anything? Turn the votes. Okay, right, so we'll now go to the first item on the agenda, which is to elect the Chair of the Council, the Town Mayor, doing the proposal.
Yeah, I'd like to propose Derek Kennedy.
Thank you, and do we have a second?
You've done it.
And your second, so we have a proposal from Peter Oldland, the Second, Penny Graham. Okay.
Yes, I'd like to propose Miss Broke of Democracy Choice and Change, councillor Stephen Ball.
And do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, so we can go to the vote, so is anybody, anybody else? Okay, so goes to the vote, so those in favour of...
Do we not speak, Derek?
No.
Well, maybe that's in the, when the papers went out, the people were... Just because no...
Okay, okay, sorry, sorry, I'll, I'll, I'll...
I think it's really important that we have a democratic vote. I don't think it should be a procession of such a coronation. I've been on the Town Council now for ten years. Been elected in two different ways and have seen the substantial change in how the Town Council sets itself up. And the priorities has shifted more to being more adventurous, more proactive. And that is something I'm keen to support. I don't think it should be carved up beforehand and everybody gets ahead of community engagement or ahead of he and I or whatever. I think it's really important that we discuss things, that we know who the characters are and what their philosophy is. Last, during the last term in particular, I was quite impressed by some of the individuals, you know, they, they opened Hexham, that talked about being open, being out there, that people was visible. That's important to us, that's important, that we're visible, that we're held accountable. And I don't want a vote that's decided, used to call it in olden days, in the back rooms, murky back rooms, that have been decided beforehand. So I'm standing and it's, you know, up to you, and you probably, I won't change anybody's vote. But I think it's more important that it's not a procession, it's not a con, an enclosed conclave where the white smoke comes up and it's decided by people we don't know. I think it's important that we shine a white light on this, a white light that says, be open, be accountable, be equitable, be diverse. One thing, we came through a very difficult period last year where we all joined together when Jane Cavan left, and it was a real difficult period where people from different views got together and got the Town Council through the most difficult of difficult periods. So I think it's important that we have an election, I think it's important that we have a vote, and I think it's important that we work together in the future rather than it be decided before meeting stand.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. So I'm Derek Kennedy, I've been on the Town Council now for, this is my twenty-second yet, the last four years as the Town Mayor. What's important to me, well, what really is important to me is to reflect what this town is. And I've always felt this town is about its community, community and its people. We came out of Covid four years ago and we were all elected as the council then. People had been afraid of being stuck in the house and the first thing we did was like, what was Hexham all about? What was its objective? What was really good about Hexham? And we realised that one good thing about Hexham is the communities. We have all these fantastic community organisations who I'd not met. And we all worked together and thought, actually, that's what we need to bring back again. And I keep thinking that that focus for me is always about that. It's about the community, it's about bringing people together, it's about those communities working together and having all those fantastic interest groups. You know, so I've been heavily involved in, you know, the music that we put on the parks, you know, Christmas lights, the remembrance service, all those different aspects was really making rich this town. It's a fantastic little town, but it's about the people in the, in the community, the communities of that. What I want to do, what I like to do with this council is to create a family. I want us all to be part of that family and that work together. Now, we all know families, it always sounds great, families do have their disagreements and that's just the way it is, but we work together and we work things out and we deliver and be constructive and always focused on that community. The green agenda is really, really important. We know which way the climate change is going and we need to work together to ensure that that is our contribution is part of that. And, you know, I will be very, very supportive of that. I think the last four years has been the best four years of the Town Council that I've been on. And I think we would have stripped the Town Councils of previous years by a majority. The previous Town Councils were effective but not ambitious. The last Town Council was hugely ambitious. And I'd like to see that that is how we operate and go forward again, a very, very ambitious programme. So I'd like to leave that as a Town Mayor, I think it's all our contribution here, all of our contribution to do that. So that's why I put my name forward. I'm conscious we have lots of brand new councillors on, we want to work with them and really, you know, bring them into that family, educate you, you know, help, help and do things for your brand new ideas, your brand new vision, your brand new eyes to like, actually help us to know, actually, why are we doing it that way? Good, good point, let's do something different. So I think it's a lovely blend of people that we have here, you know, those who've been here a long time, like myself and Stephen, those who've been here for one term, and those brand new people, great mix, great mix. So let's work together, you know, it's everybody's council this, nobody owns it. Nobody owns a council, it's about working together. So I will leave it at that. Right, so we will now go to the vote, so you will have, it's just so aware, just pop the standard orders, that the vote is by show of hand, it's not, it's not, it's not a... It's not a secret ballot, it's not a secret ballot, it is by show of hand. So we have two votes, we'll have two people contesting, you'll have one vote, so you'll either vote for candidate number one, which is myself, candidate number two, which is Stephen Ball. So I will go around each person and ask for the person you are supporting and we'll top those up in the winners. So if I go to my...
Derek.
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 Okay.
Stephen.
Derek.
Derek.
Stephen.
Derek.
Okay.
From the vote, it's appointed Derek as the, as the Mayor.
Thank you very much, thank you for your, your support for me and I will be leaning on all of you to support this, this is about being, being the community. So that's, right, so our next item is to receive the Chair's declaration and acceptance of office. Is there something I need to read? I think you didn't, okay, is it right, so? Yeah, I will, I will cite the Chair's declaration and acceptance of office. So I think we've done the welcomes, obviously we've mentioned Derek Tiffin, which is a sidekick, he's a great servant for this town. Number four, apologies for absence.
Got David Wright, John Ward and...
Nigel Hall.
Nigel Hall, so Nigel Hall.
Do we have a deputy?
Yeah, number five, yeah. So item number five is to elect the Vice Chair of the Council, the Deputy Mayor, to have a nomination.
I nominate Penny Grennan.
Okay, and we have the... Don Sackville. Do we have another nomination?
I'll nominate Suzanne.
Okay, we have Suzanne. So that's by Stephen Ball, the Second.
I'll second that.
Okay, so we'll invite Penny Grennan to...
Yes, yes, thank you very much. Yes, I'm very excited about the composition of the new council. We've seen a drift away from a touring majority to actually a much more balanced, mixed, integrated and representative selection of councillors. And I think that this is our opportunity to be really ambitious and to consolidate what we've done so far and develop it further. And as Derek said, there's lots of new ideas and we need to pool those. I think we need to actually, because what's happened at county level and elsewhere in the country is really disquieting, and I think that it's really important that we reflect on why this didn't happen in Hexham, why the movement of reform didn't occur here, and it's because we engage with the people of the town. And I think that we all do that in our own way, but personally, I would like to stand as a Deputy Mayor, because I've lived in this town for thirty years. My background is community development, I've run events, projects, I've been trustee of organisations, I've stood for Parliament, I know so many people in the town that I couldn't possibly have a party and involve them all. And I have working relationships with all of them and I also front some really big projects. So Grow Hexham and the Bandstand Sessions and out of that came the Blue Cross Festival and then more recently the Hex Mart's Town Initiative. So I think that this is our moment to do something really exciting. I don't have a job, I'm a musician, but then that all happens in the twilight hours mainly. So I, I think, and most people, even if they don't share necessarily my politics or agree with everything that I do, will agree that I am dedicated to the welfare of the town. And I'm really concerned that we consolidate now because of all the stuff that's going on at county level and nationally. And we actually look at the things that we can secure for the best interests of the town now so that we are resilient should things, things change. And so I feel like I have a, like a strategic perspective, I have a personal commitment to the town. I love meeting people, I'm good at public speaking, I hope you'd agree. And so I would like to support the Mayor in actually moving forward and outwards towards the town and actually galvanising all those corners that we haven't managed to cover so far. Thank you.
Suzanne.
Yeah, yeah, I'm allowed to just sit down. Right, I didn't prepare a speech because I just didn't feel equipped somehow, I don't know, but I've realised that people don't know in here. So for those of you who don't know me, I'm Suzanne Fairliss Aitken, I'm the councillor for Hexham East. And I would like on that, very much on that banner, as it were, to stand for the people of Hexham East, which I don't think the Mayor or Deputy is sort of represented for some time. So I feel that in the interest of balance, I do need to put myself forward. I was a champion of community engagement at the last council, who I really enjoyed working with. It was a cross-party collaboration of amazing minds, like it's going to be here today, I can just tell. So I'm quite excited, like, it really shouldn't try and center party politics, especially in these times of a real shift to the far right nationally. So as a champion of CHD, what did I do? Well firstly, we've kind of failed in our application for award-winning council because of the community engagement, so my first thing was to throw it open to people. So in that regard, I took hold of the social media comms and boosted it from sixty people to now nearly two and a half thousand following our page. And so in the purposes of transparency, we put things out there, events are called, it's really good. It's a, one of the reporters called it one of the most manned Town Council pages he's ever seen. So I really hope to address that with regards to sort of opening up meetings. I'm a big believer in the diversity of the council and behind that, I wanted to make sure as many different, you know, members of the public could access our meetings as well as take part in council. So I still believe very much in the hybrid model and on that note, I've assisted with the purchase of an owl, which I hope will facilitate that and open up the council to all. In Hexham East, what have I done? I've done the Wombles, a little picking group, which you may have seen out and about. What else have I done? I've done the Christmas lights, I redesigned that entirely and I'm quite proud of that. I gave a medal to a cat, I hope that stands for something, that was quite true. And I've really enjoyed my four years and I'd like to continue in the spirit of getting stuff done. I think, I know lots of people are very friendly with children at the seal and being a governor of the schools. So yeah, I'd just like to take that forward into a different role maybe this time. Thank you.
Thanks, Suzanne. Okay, so this is for the election of the Vice Chair of the Council. So there is, again, similar to what's just happened before, there is two persons standing. There's the person named Penny Grennan, this will be Suzanne Fairliss Aitken. I will go around the room and ask for you to name one of those persons and obviously the person with the majority wins that vote. So again, I'll start with Penny.
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 No vote from us all? Yes.
Suzanne. Penny.
Penny.
Amy.
Penny.
Suzanne.
So I think, I think on that basis, if I'm correct, I think we'd like Penny Grennan to be the Vice Chair of the Council. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Good, so that's a bit of democracy, I think, for new councillors, probably a bit, maybe a little bit uncomfortable, I guess, but like, this is just the start of a full year journey, you know, and we'll, we'll take, we'll take you through and we'll all help, help you through this. But you're welcome, you know, we want to create that family of the council, so that is good. Right, public parties of this, well... Quick, I need long look.
If I raise something, I'm a public party. It's not pressing, but I do think it's important. I think we could re, for the next meeting, we could rearrange the room, because the public have, you have their backs to the, to them, to the public. And I just think that we've got so much to talk, it might be, it might be possible. So they are a bit slightly more, we can address that.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, yeah, yeah, come up with an idea, come up with an idea, whatever things, things are for. Certainly do that. Yes, we'll put them in the meetings, we'll make them, absolutely, come up with an idea, well, well. Right, seven, which is disclosures of interests, any disclosures of interest. So what this is, this is like if you have any conflicts to what's on the agenda, so, you know, so you... Any conflicts? No? Any dispensations, is there any reason for dispensation, can you explain?
So if there was, if there was a conflict of interest, then it might be prudent for the council to allow people to continue within the discussion. And the council could give a councillor dispensation to speed or dispensation to go, depending on circumstances.
Right, okay, so that's, that's quickly, so I'd, I'd, for example, Stephen Ball is the Chair of the Community Centre. So if there was a discussion about the Community Centre, we could either, you know, normally under known practice, we'd ask that that person to remove themselves, but in, under certain circumstances, we could, we could actually say, well, give a dispensation and allow that person to contribute to the meeting. Just as a, just a mark for explanation. Right, number nine, which is the meeting, so the last meeting, which is to receive as a true record the minutes of full council held on Monday, 14th April 2020. Fine, so I'll go through each of those pages. So page one. So I'll ask a question on page one, is that, has that motion been sent to the County Council? Right, so if you can tell, so as you can read on page one, there was a motion to the County Council about the old bus station site. So we just asked the clerk just to make sure that that motion gets sent to the County Council, it's not been done yet. Page two. There's a spelling mistake on TC, I'm a, I'm a... Yeah, same code. Page three. Page four and page five. So permission to sign most of the accurate record? Okay, so what I, what I do now is I have to, I have to sign, uh, date. So after signing the date, each of these pages, just as a true record of our meeting. Okay, item ten is confirmation of standard orders and financial regulations.
So I've sent everybody a copy of the standard orders and financial regulations. Really, the rest of the agenda is, we happen, you happen to have started in the council on the annual meeting of the council, where we have to agree certain things for the rest of the council year, and one of which is the rules and regulations that we adhere to. So I've sent you a copy. Previously, nobody had any motions to amend either standard orders or, or financial regulations. So it's just basically it's a request for you to acknowledge that there is this and that you will abide by them.
Is there anything that, that has any amendments to, to those standard orders? Oh, to those standard orders or financial regulations since last year?
Well, we haven't had any motions come forward up until now. There have been a few people who've had some mentions about how they wish it changed in the future. But possibly they could be done with, the ones that have come forward could possibly be done with standard orders.
Okay, that's good. Okay, so it's very procedural, sorry, Suzanne.
Yeah, I just, I was just wondering, I didn't see any mention of the standard orders at the annual general, general meeting that we talked about last year. That's required by law between, I think it's March and December of July.
That's the annual meeting of the town.
Yeah.
That's the annual town meeting. It's, it's, there is a requirement for an annual town meeting. Technically, there's no requirement for the Town Council to hold that meeting in usual circumstances, it is. Today, we haven't had any, nobody's suggested anything that they want to be discussed at an annual town meeting so far. I think historically, it's been, an amalgam of, of this meeting has been styled as the annual meeting of the council all at all, like, it's happened immediately in front of this meeting.
Yeah. So it's very script of plans about it in law, though, so I just want to make sure that we are legal this council.
We're legal, but I think it would be, I would absolutely advise that you do hold a meeting.
Could I ask about, at that town meeting, are there requirements that we have to fulfil or...
Very few.
So could we possibly have a town meeting where we invited people to come and just talk about their aspirations?
Yeah, I mean, I think other than, other than the day, other than the time of day, I think it has to be after six o'clock, is, is very little requirements of the meeting.
Yeah, I think, I think, you know, rather than just sit them somewhere else in the room, I think we do need to, like, engagement photos will need to be advertised and then we can sort of set an agenda, I think they're an idea for the basic generals, that the chairs of each meeting would, you know, demonstrate what each committee had done and then maybe be held to account a bit by the public if possible. I mean, you know, that's just a suggestion, but I do think we do need to do one urgently.
Well, I mean, I think, given, given the date that we have now and we've got to do something within the month, then is that, is that an agenda, is that a format that you were proposing?
Uh, yes. Yeah, except I, that wasn't actually what my intent, what I intended, because it's a bit difficult to call chairs of committees to account when you're at the start of a, of a, um, the new council. I think it should be framed in a way that people come and talk to us, come and meet your council, the new councillors. We're all in the room together, so if the new councillors get asked something they can't possibly answer, then there's a dear to help out. But the idea is that is meet the council, it's also come and talk to us about what your concerns are, rather than doing, and then we would match it with the things that we had or had not, not done, rather than it turn into some sort of calling people to account, because people have already just stated where their, their faith or, yeah, lies by voting. So I think it should be much more open and, and a conversation.
Okay. So, so, so you mind?
No, I've got another note to finish this point, I've got another question.
So, 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 you know, I've mentioned I've been on the council twenty-two years. One year has been the only time where I've seen the annual town meeting done well. And it wasn't just done well, it was outstanding. So it was Julie Lloyd who took that one forward and she did an outstanding job. And I think this... And, and I think this is, I, I always think the words are quite muddled up on this, because you have the, the town council meeting, you have the annual general meeting of the town council, which this one is, and then you have the annual town meeting. So it's not the town council meeting, it's the annual meeting of the town, the town itself, so it's not a council meeting. We, we might organise it, but it's not our meeting as such, we might facilitate it, but it isn't necessarily our meeting to go tell people what Exham Town Council do. Um, so what Julie Lloyd did was, was something about, what you just mentioned, Penny, was not a tell, you know, saying what the town council is doing, but it was just a, a meeting of those big groups who, you know, who are very influential, all of these community groups and who are, you know, what they wanted to say of the town, um, you know, what's the future look? What, what's the intention, you know, we know, we know the Oxtown is, 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 is a great example of that, but it's, it's in its embryonic, embryonic stage, something like that. So, um, if you are going to do it, I would, I would suggest we pick some subjects which aren't council, or actually what's more, more than what's, what, where's the town heading, so things like the Oxtown, um, and we know, um, you know, how, what, what, what we're trying to do, Suzanne, with, with certain things, on the Oxtown. So, um, um, you know, where's that home, where is, where is, um, for example, the, um, middle school site, where, where's that heading? So maybe some things that are outside the town council, but actually what, what is the future look for, say, um, Exham in maybe the next, you know, three, four years? Um, but if we're going to do that, we're going to get a finger out.
Yeah, we could do that then.
Yeah, yeah. Um, so I think like some contribution or reach out to the key, um, community groups would be, would be good. Let's, let's have a look. Is that all right, Nick, Tom?
Um, just on the standing orders, um, just one thing, the court was out four years ago, we weren't used to process. Because of the standing orders, it's fairly sort of regulated, so for meeting agendas need to go out so many days before the meeting, and then to get something on the agenda has to be done so many days before the agenda goes out. So don't be caught by twentyparts, I think, to judge last minute. So you've just got to look at standing orders, I can't remember what the timings are, and there is something like eight days before the meeting, and then three days before the agenda, and that's just in the standing orders. So just watch that, you want to, so you almost have two or three weeks ahead of a meeting, put your point in.
Yeah, so what I would, I would recommend is if, you know, I've just made that up, Mike, is if anybody wants something on the agenda, uh, or, you know, whether it be the town council agenda or all the other general meetings of the, of the, of the other committees, is, is get your thinking caps on, think ahead, um, and like, say if you want something to go on, on, on a meeting agenda, is, is ask straight away. Golly, don't, don't hang on and wait, uh, you know, just really get in there. And if you knew, just totally, totally fellow colleagues, you know, then they'll, they'll help you through, you know, craft things and they'll help you through. Because it is, it is, it is very formulaic and very room-bound, it's dog or something. Right, um, right, so we are on to number.
Have they confirmed?
Is that everybody confirmed?
Yeah.
And, and we've got a date for the, if we're going to do the annual town meeting.
When does it have to be done by the first of June?
It has to be done by the first of June.
First of June, my God.
But like, let's not let the train run the dog here, if we want to have a town meeting, if we don't miss that day, does the sky fall in? No, it doesn't, so if we want to have a town meeting, I would rather do something slowly and good than fast and long.
Well, you need to talk to the cloud.
Well, no, no, that's, that's just the rules, so if we want to have a, have a town meeting, let's have a conversation, what we want, what we want to do with it, it doesn't have to be by the first of June, even though the rules say, but the rules, like, the rules are just pieces of paper. If we want to do one, we'll do it right, and we'll do it in a managed fashion, or then like quickly, maybe mess with it, too.
Okay, so can I make a proposal then, seeing we've got, I know there's three town councils missing, but everybody's in the same room. I, I would suggest that we, that if people want to help out in the organising of that, that they say so today, and it doesn't mean if people are not here, can't join in, um, and then, then we don't have to write to everybody, say, do you want to do this, blah, 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 and then they don't really email us, they missed it, blah, blah, blah. And if people want to get involved and, and turn it into something deeper deeper.
Yeah.
So, to say so now.
Yeah, that's a good plan. Anybody interested? Hey, dog? Bonjour? I'll, I'll certainly, I'll, I'll contribute. Yeah, Suzanne, thank you. Good, yeah, let's, 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 let's make that a good point. Good, right, um, yeah, Peter? Right, good, and, right, number eleven, review of the terms of reference, delegation arrangements to committees, subcommittees, staff and other local authorities.
So traditionally, we have, um, you, you send your papers, but there's a planning infrastructure committee that has the following, um, score, finance and general purposes committee that's got a score, community engaging committee, um, as a sub, is also a subcommittee of FNGP, which is staffing, a subcommittee of CE for remembrance, um, we have a cemetery working group.
Is that attached to any committee or is that just a?
Cemetery working group, the reports back to FNGP. Uh, reports back to planning, sorry. So it's, are we, are we hap- we've got to make a, like a declaration that we're, we're happy with this current committee structure and will, will carry on operating this way for the following year.
So, so you should have in your papers here, and particularly for new councillors, it's just, um, a series of, um, highlighted areas, which tells you what each of the, those committees are actually responsible for. Probably worth keeping hold of those, I would suggest, um, I, I would suggest, and as I said, obviously for new people that's quite dumb, not asking that question, but, um, I would, I would suggest for, for, for this year, keep, keeping it like this, and if you feel, you know, once you've had a year, go and phone around, and if you feel there's any adjustments you'd like to, like this, suggest, please do. Um, but as you can see, there's three major committees, there's the planning infrastructure, that's like basically two things. As the infrastructure, what the town council owns, which is the cemetery, the benches, the, um, play parks, particularly that would be a big focus this year. And planning, which is where the county councillors, the planning authority, will ask town council for an opinion on things that are going to be, uh, built, for example, in, in the parish of Exham Town Council. Um, you hear FNGP, which means financial and general purposes, so that's all about the finances, uh, the assurance activities for the internal order, the budget setting, so it's a very, very important committee. It's always sets the, the agenda for how much money we have and where we're going to allocate the funds accordingly. Uh, grant is, is quite, quite an important one, where we, where we give money to other organisations, such as the Hexham Community Partnership, who deliver, um, events on behalf of the town. Um, and the community engagement committee, which is, um, all about the, the major events that are held in the town. Uh, so things like Remembrance Day, um, and the various others, um, you, you can see there. Okay, is that, is that all right, everybody?
Can I just carry on?
Yeah.
So, um, the, the council made a decision at the last, um, annual meeting of the council to allow all councillors to attend every committee, uh, which is great, because people can, can contribute wherever they feel necessary on, necessary on the agenda, um, but it does create a bit of a logistical issue in ensuring that there are going to be sufficient people attending on a, um, a meeting to meeting basis. So one of the things we did last time, which I would like to carry on this time, is to have, um, and, and this is just for you to consider where you fit in with each of the different committees. But it's basically a, a meeting matrix, so each of the, each of the committees down one side, and then just to see where you consider yourself in relation to each of those committees. So whether you're a core member, that you intend to attend all the meetings and that you will receive papers, in which case it would be really helpful if you gave your apologies if you weren't intending to be there, and then we can manage things better. Whether you just want to be informed, receive agendas, you may attend occasional meetings, or whether you, you're not intending being an active member of that committee and you just want to receive the minutes at full council. So any of those is fine, um, but it just helps me to know where you place yourself in that matrix, so that we can logistically handle things a bit better.
Can I just ask a question, uh, the difference between the two, the core or the casual one, in terms of voting? So if you just turn up casually, oversaw into a meeting, are you still allowed?
Yes, so, so everybody has voted, so we changed the constitution during the last council, so everybody has voting rights on every committee.
But could I add to that, that actually in the committees, it's much more, there are agendas and a formality to it, but there's a much greater exchange of views, and it's quite often consensus, it doesn't go to the vote very often. Because people don't, yeah, no, that's a good idea, and then it just get, so, 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 you know, it's clear, it's good to be clear about who was eligible and who isn't, but it doesn't rise very.
It's much less formal.
Just a little what Andrew's, um, saying, yeah, the, a, a meeting can't take place unless there's a minimum of three councillors, so if there's only two, which means that that doesn't function, so we've got, we've managed to do it, but okay, we came very close to that one meeting, so it's just, we do need councillors to attend.
So in that point though, does the core number depend on the size of the committee theory? So if you had, for instance, fifty or come fourteen people that wanted to be a core part of that committee, surely the core number would be more than three then?
No, no, we need three, this is, it makes you don't.
Because it's not a percentage.
Oh, oh, I'll confirm.
You see what I mean, yeah.
So, so, is it, is it worth you sending everybody, are you, are you going to send everybody?
Yeah, I'll, I'll send everybody this list, and if you can just come back to me with, for each of the, well, I'll send a pro forma out, and then just come back to me, um, just saying for each of the committees, whether you intend to be a core member, an informed member, or you just want the minutes.
You can, you can be, if you want to be a core member of everything, you can be, don't, don't worry about that. And it, and it doesn't matter that, you know, or, or it does matter, you know, if you just want to be informed, you start to go, it doesn't matter, it's, it's just of basically the internal procedural things, so you do use this explanation of what the committees are, um, you know, that, that'll help. Right, is that okay?
And the voting of the chairs of each meeting, that was the first meeting.
The first meeting, yeah, so appointment of new committees, so.
We have lost, so.
There's no, there's no new committees as, as such. Uh, thirteen, review of arrangements, including legal agreements with other local authorities, not for proper bodies in business.
Um, we have to have an agenda, we don't have any.
Um, review of assets, so you should have this, this, uh, on this, this table, don't matter.
So one hundred and forty? Representation on the.
Oh, sorry, yeah.
Well, same on that one, we don't, we don't officially appoint anybody to any external bodies, so.
No, polycology, I missed that one. So fifteen, review of assets, so as you can see, um, on this, this table, it gives us a, a significant list of all the assets that, that we own, so that includes machinery, uh, buildings. Um, so what you will see, so just for new councillors, um, what was driving me crazy four years ago was that if you went see to the benches outside the Hexham Abbey, um, that bench was owned by the Exham Town Council, that one was owned by Town, Town Council, that one wasn't, wasn't, that one was, that one wasn't, and that one wasn't. And we couldn't tell which was watching who and what and that was, and it drove me nuts. So as part of a random exercise, come, um, control of our assets, so we know which ones are, you will see little plaques on each of the, each of them, where it says supplied by Exham Town Councils. You'll see those on benches, on bus stops, on bins and, and various other things, just, just so you know that those are all nice in that, they haven't got that on, probably isn't ours, so, so we've done that as a, as a general, I think, um, that's good. So, was that okay? So you can see it's quite lengthy, um, quite a, quite a lengthy list.
For mention, Sharon, how do you tackle depreciation on this?
It, it's, it's not, it's not, um, like the normal answer to all these questions, it doesn't work like that with local government finances. Um, you don't do a depreciation on the asset list, um, in fact, some of these historically have probably entered wrong. Um, it doesn't matter when you acquire the asset, you list the original cost in the asset list, and that never depreciates, um, it may, it may come off the asset list if you dispose of it, but it just keeps the same. Um, no, value isn't even the right word, it's just, it just, there's a notation of what the original purchase was that follows it through the, um, its lifespan at the council.
So in the accounts, there's no account for?
No.
The play pack would be a good example, for example, of that, there should be depreciation on that, there wasn't.
No, it's, it's, it, you know, if we, if we buy, if we buy things for the play pack, they go in at purchase value and they stay on the asset list until they're removed from the board.
Okay, are we happy? Okay, and so number sixteen, confirmation of policies and procedures.
So is a, it should be a, a list, a list like that. Um, these are the policies and procedures that were given to us by, um, CH, CHM, or the, um, a lot of external HR and governance people who we subscribe to. Um, as we get them from the HR people, we, if we, um, adopt them as written, then we have legal recourse on their advice. If we amend them, then, you know, we're, we take them into our own, our own hands. The vast majority of them are all, um, employee related. Um, and they're just things that increasingly as employees were being, um, you know, were, were required to have. They've been through FNGP, and they and I have gone down and thought through them line by line, which is. I will say that the only one that raises any, um, any issues is around, um, email, email use for councillors, about having, um, a designated email address for councillors, and the potential, um, additional load, having, managing a separate, um, email address can, can, um, you know, you can encounter that, I mean, I think for, for new councillors, it should be okay, because it has a designation, but for, for existing ones, I appreciate that that may not be ideal. Um, the main policy advice we're having around councillors and having a separate, um, a separate email address that's a dot, dot gov, dot UK one, is, um, a separation in terms of any free information request or, or similar, where you have to hand over your, all your information. Um, so. Um, so that's, that's the only one that's had any contention. Um, but we're prepared to work with the, with the people who supply our, um, IT to either forward them onto other emails or, or manage them in some way. So it's not an overly burdensome process.
When, when will we get email addresses then?
All right, well, that was going to be the second question of, um, I, I didn't want to presume everybody's style, you know, whether you want, whether, I said to Mike, you know, whether it was a mike.dilling@hexhamtowncouncil.gov.uk or a michael or, you know, or M or whatever. So, I mean, I think if we can have a common, a common style, but I just need to know from everybody how you want to, um, you know, whether you want a shopless name or you're full of us name. Um, but they've said they can, they can be set up in a few days.
And how do you want us to let you know?
Well, you can let, well. I'm not bothered how you let me know, honey. Um, if you can let me know at the end of the meeting, that'd be, that'd be great.
So for the, for somebody who's worked in government long, long time, um, it is traditional for, for, like, say, for my name would be like derrick.kennedy@hexhamtowncouncil.gov.uk, that's, that's the, the sort of the traditional thing.
And that's easier, isn't it?
Yeah, 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 yeah. Um, I think just one thing to add is, um, that we really wanted to do this four years ago. We just, it was talked about four years ago, it just, it just didn't happen. Um, it, it is, it is part of the protection for you because the dot gov.uk email address is, is, is secure. As opposed to having a, a Hotmail or Gmail or they, they all secure, they, they are secure. But plus you could be, for example, asked, um, for FOI requests and stuff. So, um, I, I would really urge people to use the dot gov.uk, use it as your relationship email between the public and the council and all your political stuff, if you're going to do political stuff. Or like on your own private one, if that the way you could do it all, if, if there wasn't an extension for one, maybe. So, um, yeah, um, yeah, but it's a good type of start, um.
Could, could I add to that? Um, we've had, I, I think it would be nice if we had perhaps, I don't know if everybody does WhatsApp, but if we also had a WhatsApp group, which would have had all the councillors on it, which is not about, oh, it's a nice day today, sort of chat. But basically, sometimes you get so many emails and everything, you know, it might be just an idea that you want to run past everybody or you just want to say, or, you know, has everybody done such and such? Or I'd like to suggest this, and it's a way of us all keeping in touch with each, with each other. And I don't know whether that can happen, because we're talking about status of communication.
So can I, can I suggest that, because I have a conversation about that outside of this meeting.
Okay.
I think, I think.
Okay, right.
Why can't we have it now? It's exactly what I was talking about.
Let's, let's do a, let's meet ends in the celebratory conversation.
Yes, but it's also not very secure, I suppose.
Yes.
Yes.
So, so.
That's what I was, that's what I was asking.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Confirmation of what will happen?
We're agreeing confirmation of policies and procedures. There is a cost implication to the email addresses. Individually, it's not very much, but when there's fourteen of you in this form of the year. I mean.
Three times.
Yeah, I mean, it's definitely worth doing, but I think it comes to. It's more for your information than anything else, but I think it comes to a big.
Very, very important. Right, and just to check in with the email addresses. Is there any security issues with people's personal devices? Using your own personal laptop? Would we have to download like a? Would be that a complication? I'd be very happy to do all that, I'm just wondering what the implications are having. I presume you'd have on your smartphone or your laptop or?
Yeah, I can't remember what happened when I put mine on my phone actually, but I'll. I'll get the IT people to send out. To put together something about, you know, this is how you put it on your computer, this is on your phone, and pass it over.
Cheers. Good question. Yeah, so maybe just a piece of Outlook. Presume that's it. Yeah, 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 yeah. See, for example, I've got on my private phone, I've got Outlook, which has got the county council one. And you're excellent. I've been taking a photo now. Right, next one.
They're all confirmed.
Will we be confirmed?
Yeah.
Thank you. Seventeen, confirmation to exercise the general power of competence in the future. To the next one.
So the. Currently, we can only do things that a town council can do. Under the general power of competence, we can do things that any individual has the right to do. And so it gives us as a corporate company a bit more flexibility. And we don't have to seek a particular way of doing things. The only restriction that we have is that I have to pass an exam to do it. And I haven't passed yet, so. I've passed the first two, but I haven't passed the third one. So during this meeting, it's just to ask the councillor, ask the councillor to adopt that power. As and when it becomes available, because I think you can only do it during this meeting, but we can, you can do it in anticipation of that power becoming. There for you to use. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay. This was. Could I just raise some concerns about that? Sorry. I must admit, it's probably considered a council, I don't know if I'm not going to be certain expert on this, but I understand some councils like Woking. Have got themselves into very big financial difficulties by going beyond their traditional responsibilities of local authorities. So it's just to express some caution that if we do go beyond the town council responsibility, that could open up quite a few risks. Don't expect anyone here is rushing out to buy lots of property. Or to set up a massive big skyscraper in the centre of Hexham and try to make some money off it, but it's just to express some caution. I think it would be good to come back with a formal decision and a discussion before. Absolutely, yeah. Welcome to Huxham. But yeah, exams. Could I just ask, was Woking, was that a parrot? It was a, it was a, I think it was a local authority, so it would have been a, I think it was probably a borough. Yeah, 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 that's many, many of them. But I don't know, I can't sign something off, but I don't know, yeah, just to express some caution, that's all.
Just a final question, let's say we bought the property and wanted the town council to move into that. Is that within our agreement?
Yeah, there's, it's. There's loads that we can do as a town council, but you've got to look for a particular bit of. Legislation to enable you to do that. Whereas as an individual, you wouldn't be looking to see, can I buy that property as an individual? You would just go and do it because that's something as an individual, you have a right to do. So it's not so much that we wouldn't do anything different. It's more, we have a free procedural route to do things that as a council we may wish to do, so.
And then if we're interested to borrow money?
We can borrow money as a council. It's, it's, there's not a huge amount of different things we can do. It's just a more straightforward procedure in terms of achieving it really.
So it's not non-specular, is it?
No, no, I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't put us at any greater risk. It just reduces some of the. You know, the, the, your office of. You would still be making decisions in the same way, so it's not, it's not.
Okay, I'll bring it in.
Yeah, just to follow from Simon's part, so everything we do, we still have to go to committees. It's not like an individual person can go and make a decision about something. That's, that's, you know, it's still come to committees like it does now. So in terms of safeguarding of what we're doing, the procedure is still the same as it is, it's just, yeah.
So it'll be more by councillors in the committee and then it was sort of called for councillors last time.
But if you do want to adopt that power at some point in the year, you need to agree.
Yeah.
No, no.
So, so, so we've had that power for how many, we've had that power for. We've served it, but we've had that power for several years in the council.
You generally had it in the council since I came into being, it's only with me not having that power again.
It's just a matter of procedure. Okay.
So is that a prayer?
Date of next meeting, so you'll have a meeting dates on here. The full council generally is the second Monday of the month, so, you know, just. Get that in your calendar since six P M, always in this location. And then there's a series of other dates there for the other committees. Generally, they possibly could flex if those were struggling to get committee members and was in various states. But we've actually got a separate time to get that. So those committees are held in the cemetery at the, at the old cemetery, sorry.
Yeah, just the five hundred and general purposes.
Yeah.
The invite, what time is that, four thirty or like this? Tomorrow, no, that's a staffing committee, right?
Oh, tomorrow, tomorrow. Right. And then as a calendar, we should check the meeting at five thirty, so it's just, that was just an early meeting. All okay with that? Yeah, right. To note the draft minutes in close of committee meetings. Oh, yeah, is that the F and G?
This is F and G.
Yeah, so just again, this will help new councils, this is just an example of the finance and general purposes. Minutes, so that meeting took place on the eighth of the March. And it's for transparency, it's brought to this council, so I'll ring the councillors.
Yeah, the seat stands wrong for the next one. The status goes, they've got a bit, but that's not clear today, it's a blank state. It's pretty imminent, so.
For the twelfth.
Twelfth of June, twelfth of June is it?
Oh, sorry, I've got the wrong one. Twelfth, thank you, sorry.
That's tight, so, yeah, so, sorry, so, yeah, so, so, basically, what will happen every, every full council meeting, you'll get, you'll get the list. You'll get the minutes of the meetings that took place in the previous month, just so you can see if you're in there.
The meetings that were approved in the previous.
Yeah, the meetings that were approved in the previous. Yeah.
Could I just ask a question since we're talking about committees? So Suzanne made reference to the owl, which you might, there's bird watchers amongst you, what's one of those? So basically, I just wonder whether it'd be useful for new members to know about. The owl and about attendance at meetings, because the owl is a remote device that we have. Where you can actually come in on Teams and then you can be seen on a big screen. And it works, whereas the other system didn't work very well at all. But that's what the owl is in case anyone was wondering. So, because I don't know if that would be useful at this point to say that if you can't physically get to anything, you can attend remotely. But you cannot vote, is that right?
Yeah, so legislation during COVID, there was emergency legislation brought in where councils were allowed to continue in vote via remote means. Once that emergency legislation was allowed to lapse. It meant all councils throughout the country had to go back to the old rules, which were that. Only those who are present in a meeting, physically present in the meeting can vote. Which is so old fashioned and I know the current government are looking to review that. But they haven't done that as yet. So what, we were not, as a councillor, were not content with that. So we were allowing councillors to dial in and contribute to the meeting even though they couldn't vote. We've now purchased the device that Suzanne mentioned earlier, just thing called the owl, which is like hugely powerful and very, very productive. We've only had it a few matter of weeks and it's fantastic. And it allows, you know, so you can be dialing via Teams or. And it contributes to that meeting and the sound quality and the visuals are fantastic, so it's really, really good way.
Yeah, thank you, it also takes minutes and things as well, if you wanted to, and it forwards as well. I mean, it's, yeah, we've had it in committees so far, but it is, it is rather brilliant and I do suspect that the legislation will change now with the new government and. And her on, that's quite frankly, because it allows for everyone to participate, many people can vote remotely, like we did in COVID. All the better, you know, people who work, people who have busy lives can still slot into their council business. On their kitchen, bedroom, do your island wherever and vote.
Absolutely, so.
But you can't though, currently, well, not currently.
Not at the moment, you can't.
There's much to clarify about that, so.
At the moment, you can't, but we, we, we're basically with future.
Yes.
They can, they can dial in if they're requested, yeah, they can dial in, but they can't contribute, but they can dial in. Good. So that's good. So done that, done that. So just for the correspondence, we normally have a thing called the mayor's announcements, which isn't, isn't one of the other three, I mean, in general, but I'll just say a couple of announcements first of. I'll just, I'll just make the announcement, there's a couple of things that need to cover. Obviously, we've had big elections in the town, in the town council and congratulations to everybody who's. Who played that part and were victorious and, you know, and, you know, and also thanks to those who did put their name forward. It is a daunting task and we should recognise that those people actually put their name forward and Hexham did have an election, which is really good because. You know, we're a democratic society and you'd be surprised how many places where they do have councils. But those councils have never ever been elected as a local councillor, so it is, it is, I think, a great tribute to. To Hexham and the people who've put their names forward, you know, because putting your name forward above a parquet is a big, it's a big thing. You know, you, certainly for you, you people, it must be quite a daunting thing when you go like, like gulp. I'm gonna put my name on a piece of paper and then you start saying your name on it and people put crosses against it, it's really. Quite a significant act in your, in your, in your life to do that, so, you know, we should thank everybody who actually put their name forward. You know, whether, whether they won or lost, it's a really important thing and it's very important for the people of Hexham to have that for. So that's, well done everybody on that. Seems to go pretty well, you know, I've never done any particularly bad things about that. Just a couple of things, I was at the, I attended the V E day. At Hexham Abbey. Where the county council held the commemorations there, so. The county council used Hexham Abbey as the, as the place to have such big events, which is really, you know, which is a really. Great tribute to us and for the whole of Hubble and. So in attendance, I was the Lord Lieutenant, the High Sheriff, it was the first time I met the High Sheriff, he had just been appointed, so it was nice to meet him. And, you know, various other great and good people who were, who were there with change and everything else. It was a really, really good event, actually, I was really impressed to see. Particularly the pipers, the bagpipes were amazing and the buglers did an amazing job actually. And then I was the lightning at the beginning of half nine, which was a national, part of the national affair. So very, very impressive, thanks, I'm happy to commit, and very well attended as well. I also attended the, the, the Wall Memorial at twelve o'clock that day. Of the V E day, just to, just to represent the town, the town council. Because obviously the two minute silence there for them to remember, oh, no, that's gone before the V E day. Looking forward, we have our friends from Noyon in Pigadee in France. They join us on the sixth of the month of June. There is a date where they're inviting all town councils, so if you could put this in your diary, if you wouldn't mind, if you could come along, that would be great, understandable. What was that date, I'll show you.
Ten fifteen yesterday.
Yeah, ten fifteen on the Saturday, so it'll be the seventh, yeah? Is that right, the seventh of June? Right, so the seventh of June at ten fifteen, just for, just for a few minutes, it's just a meet, it's a meet and greet of our French. Compatriots, Noyonnais who are coming over and the town winners from Hexham. And that's, is that the high school?
Piers in the Wind again.
Yeah, the Windy Doors of the high school, ten fifteen, yeah.
It should, has everybody gone on to the? Has everybody picked up a link for the town council calendar?
Yeah.
It's up there.
So if you come along that, you know, the, the, the town winners passed it, the town council passed it, so that's nice. So that's good, so we look forward to their visit. And then as the, as a, as a visit to Metzingen on, so this is. Hexham going to Metzingen, which is in Germany. On the July the fourth, the fifth, the sixth to the seventh, I think, yeah. So we've had a conversation about that as well. Oh, and I, I, I opened a laundry on behalf of Hexham Town Council today. That's why I'm looking all very clean and shiny. So I went to the new laundry that's opened up at. Open Priestland's, so I was invited by genetic groom, which I thought was a great name for a, for a owner of a, of a laundry.
Tipperacrispin.
Yes, I did plenty of money laundry prepared. Yeah, exactly, so, so yes, it was lovely, so they've done, honestly, it's a fantastic job they've done there, so really, really nice. They're very looking at trying to keep this green, you know, like detergents and water and all that type of stuff, really, really impressive affair they've got there. It means that those set of three shops up there are all full. You know, she, the lady Janet groom, had phones on in Newcastle and one elsewhere, I think, so. Nice for a little local business to expand in Hexham, so that's all good, so if you can pay a visit, you know, please send your first of her way, but really nice day, really nice. So, right, I shall pass over to you to note correspondence number twenty.
What about the football, Derek? Are you mentioning the football side?
Oh, the good festival, yeah, do you want to mention that?
I mean, I just went there, but it was quite unusual to make that. I've never read a book right the way through, so I went to you. I was more of a spot the dog land. But I, I was really impressed and I learnt a great deal, I went to a couple of the sessions and another town council supported it. And I just think it should be well noted that a lot of people came into the area, it was very touristy as such. What a great festival to take place in terms of culture.
Yes.
Yeah, about China with the E Day, I'm just remembering. So as well as the E Day, the official one at the Abbey, we had a kind of local one in Hexham East. And it was a really sort of humble affair, although the BBC turned up. And there was about fifty, sixty people there and kids just playing on a new bit of land that we've been sort of. Given by Hexham First Schools, it was number twenty eight, Grow Hexham, sort of digging for victory. It was bunting up, all homemade, homemade cakes, the MP Joe Morris cake, it was fantastic. And just a great mention to Grace Sturlet, number twenty eight, for organising that, she was fantastic.
Fantastic, well done, well done.
Great, thanks.
Good, good, excellent, I'll feel you, look, where you go to, sorry, I couldn't be, I was having another engagement. Right. Correspondence.
A couple of bits, one, I've just got a note, I've got to inform you of the subscriptions they will hold as the, as the council. One is to NAL, which is the National Association of Local Councils. Two thousand, well, it was two thousand one hundred and fourteen last year, it's likely to be more this year. Subscription to Institute of Cemetery and Crematory Management for a hundred pound. The Information Minister's Office thirty five. Society of Local Council Plaques, three hundred and eighteen. Rural Marketing Partnership, four hundred and thirty seven. Living Wage subscription, six eighty two. And Carrying for God's Acre of forty five. And it'll be up to, I'll forward that on to F and G P for. Whether we continue all the subscriptions going forward.
Did we pay for your accounts and your self interest?
What, what, did we pay for your accounts?
We did, yes.
Don't fail.
You've already paid. Correspondence, other than that, it's just the usual, NAL, Can Use, Northumberland C V A and the Rural Publicity.
But to read that, I was just, you said you say NAL because obviously people wonder what NAL, could you just explain what each of them are?
National Association of Local Councils and Can is. Community Action Northumberland, which does all the rural C V S type. Community voluntary service, information in the county. There is, there is one final bit of communication, I don't know whether you want to handle this. We have a house, we have a, we've had some communication in from. A housing association that's putting an application in on, or reapplying on Corbridge Road. But I'm conscious that both Suzanne and Derek are planning for the county council, so I don't know whether you want me to. Send the note around to the other councillors or whether you want me to read it out with you in the room.
No, you can read it with us in the room, we just, because we don't comment.
Is there a time now to this, Andrew?
A time, yeah, yeah, yeah. So this is the Cusson Castles Housing Association for the development on the left as you're going. Out of town towards Corbridge, just as you're finishing, just as you're heading out the settlement. And first of all, C C H is requested to work with the town council to remove the planning objection. Please find further information below. Hexham housing need whilst we cannot definitively state that Hexham as the highest housing need in all of Northumberland. The only other area that might rival it is Berwick pending an updated housing need survey. Among the settlements where C C H A is actively involved, Hexham has the highest identified need with a net annual requirement of one hundred and two homes. This figure represents the number of homes needed each year, not just across the five year planning period. Of the hundred and ninety two non-retirement homes built in Hexham. Over recent years, only thirty four have been affordable dwellings. Local letting's allocation criteria. C C H A is committed to collaborating with both the town council and county council to establish a local letting's allocation criteria. Tailored specifically to this development. Alternative sites. C C H A has prepared a detailed alternative site assessment for the town of Hexham. Its comprehensive hundred and two page report is available for download via the planning portal. Beyond identifying potential future sites, the report provides a sobering view of current constraints. C C H A proactively pursued several opportunities, including submitting offers for the West Road site. And the bus station, we also made inquiries regarding formerly stationed homes, which were informed are under assessment by car and home. If you require any additional information or have further questions, please don't hesitate to get in touch.
So that comes to planning.
That comes to planning, but it was just to. Just to inform you all, well, largely because. We've got some new councillors, so we won't be aware that there is, or may not be aware that there is a planning application that's live in that site. And that the council previously objected on the grounds, well, it was a mixed kind of objection because. There was lots of support in the council for affordable social housing. But there was a desire to have that housing not on a greenfield site. But there's the, there's the information about the constraints of any brownfield sites in town. Together with the identified need for social housing within the town, so it's a, there's various bits going on.
Andrew didn't mention the four workhouse site, did he, in the list of buildings they'd look at?
I remember they didn't mention it there, I don't know if it's in the document, I couldn't tell them. I can, I can check and let people know.
It's maybe a conversation for outside of the meeting, but what are the barriers to developing no sense, because it seems ludicrous that we're having to. Lose some of our greenbelt when we're the town to pull the brownfield sites that. Buildings lying empty, like it should, that that should be a top priority and.
So we'll have a conversation about the plan, the planning of infrastructure, we, we.
Good, so is that the end of the meeting? Yes.
I just wonder if there is one thing. A big character in the town was Erin List, who operated the Bradshaw. She was a great advocate of Hexham, very vociferous and not always in agreement with town council members, but I think it would be appropriate. If a letter came from the town council to the family, just acknowledging the passage and saying what great contributions she made to. Excellent town life over the years, an independent shop holder and a great supporter of the town.
Yeah, thank you for that, so I did, I mean, obviously, Gail, I've known Gail for twenty odd years, she was a neighbour of mine for, for, for all that length of time. So I did put a card through to, 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 to the family home. Yeah, Gail, Gail used to be, some years ago, was a regular attender at this town council meeting. And very, really interested in what went in the town all the way through her life, you know. I used to always say, I've been Gailed when I was. If I ever walked up Holstein Bank and made the cross today, we used to always get a great, I used to get the whole Gail, the whole Gail force, you know, wonderful lady. Yeah, she was, she was a great lady and a lovely lady and, you know, there was many things I'd be seeing coming out of the brow shop by then. Now I've got my excuse.
Can you imagine that? Yeah, I knew Gail, I think she actually had plans for the shanties she created. If you go down where her shop is, she created some paintings where she had some really strong ideas of what it should, should look like. I think I was a bit, you know, she's one of, an absolutely wonderful shop and I'm always concerned about shops going in Hexham. And I understand that her daughters are going to continue the shops, I hope that that goes forward and is successful. But yes, she was an amazing character.
Yeah, it is, but we will, we will send, send that, of course, but yeah, thank you for our taking. It's lovely, right, so we'll, we'll end the meeting there, we'll just have, we'll, we'll end the meeting there efficiently, you know, we'll have, we'll have a bit of chat about various other things.